Okay, we're good? Okay. It is August 23rd, 2018 at 7:00 PM. I call the Bellevue Planning Commission meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Perrin.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
Baumgartner.
Present.
Jacobson.
Here.
Ackley.
Here.
Casey.
Here.
Ritz. Smith.
Here.
Thank you.
We have a quorum. This meeting will be conducted in the accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act, a copy of which can be found in the hallway of this hearing room. At this time, I would ask that all commissioners and audience members please silence or turn off all your cell phones or other electronic devices that could disrupt our proceedings. Please note the emergency exits are behind the audience and straight out the door. There is no severe weather anticipated tonight, so we won't need the strength of shelters, which are located in the restrooms off to the commission's right and the audience's left. There are fire extinguishers located in the hallway behind you in the audience, and an AED is located towards the restrooms as well. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes. I entertain a moment -- motion to revise or approve the planning commission meeting minutes of August 20 -- July 26th. Thank you. Regular meeting.
So moved.
Ms. Smith moves.
Second.
Second. Ms. Kane, thank you. Commissioners, comment?
I believe there's an error on the last page of the minutes where it talks about the -- I don't remember what it was. Moving the discussion on the digital signs. The commission voted to move it to September, and this says it was moved to August. I think it was just supposed to say the planning or the comprehensive plan update was to be moved to August, not the digital sign discussion.
I'm assuming you're proposing an amendment to the minutes to indicate something?
I think I am.
Okay. Do we have a second to that amendment?
Second.
Okay, a second, Ms. Kane. Okay. I think if I remember my rules of order correctly, we have to vote on the amendment first. So we'll have to vote on the amendment.
I did read that correctly, didn't I?
Yeah, because the motion is for...
That's correct.
Okay. Do you want to add a new vote? Yeah, okay. Bear with us while we let the electrons move around the system.
Okay, so we have the -- here's the hearing for the organs. And here it's moved to September 20th. But this is a new hearing. The comprehensive plan. Motion made to move it to August 23rd.
Okay, it should be on your screens now, commissioners. Please vote.
In other words, it's...
This says the digital discussion was moved to August.
Okay, I'm with you.
Does it allow you to vote? It says you're running a meeting.
Well, I'm following, right there. July 26th?
Oh.
If I might. Have I mentioned how much I love technology? Now sit down when you get up.
Yeah, you're fine.
You could be a school teacher. You could be Mrs. Kane all over again.
There you go.
Thank you. Okay, I'm thinking all the commissioners have voted. So we'll tally.
There we go.
Okay. Motion carried, is that correct?
Yes.
All approved, motion carried.
Great, thank you. Now, back to the minutes. Thank you for that amendment. We are back to our original motion to approve the minutes with that one modification. We have a motion and a second. If there's no additional discussion, commissioners are ready to vote.
You're going to accept all record?
For approval was the motion.
Mr. Chair, you can go ahead and accept into record. Take a motion on that, please.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Pardon?
You can move to accepting the record.
Oh, okay, thanks. Okay, next item on their agenda is a accepting to record all staff reports, attachments, memos, handouts regarding each application. Any additional updates from staff? No, there are not. Okay. Do we have a motion to accept all staff reports, attachments, and memos regarding each application?
Some motion.
Motion by Mr. Casey?
Second.
Second, Mr. Baumgartner. Great, thank you. Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Great, thank you. Our next item on the agenda is our consent agenda in public hearings. On the consent agenda item itself, we have no items on the consent agenda, so we will move to public hearings. Tonight, we have two public hearing items. I will announce each item, each case, ask if there are any updates from Planning Department. After that, the applicant, which is the city of Bellevue in both cases, will have an opportunity to present their request. After the applicant has been heard, the public will be allowed to provide any testimony they would like to be considered into the record. Those testifying should come forward to the podium, state and spell their name and address, and sign in for the record. Testimony should be limited to three minutes, and I reserve the right to limit that should we have a large number of people coming forward to testify. I will then close the public hearing and invite the commissioners to make their wishes known, which may include clarifications, other discussion points, and as well as making a motion to approve or disapprove each specific item, followed by a second. At that time, I'll restate the motion and resolve any issues regarded to the motion with the second and the commission members as well, and then call for a vote. As the applicant presents their request, public testimony will be heard, and then we will discuss the case. Our first item on the public agenda tonight for public hearing is a request to approve the 2018 comprehensive plan update. The applicant is the city of Bellevue. I'll turn it over to Chris for -- Tammy for comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I previously provided a memo to kind of summarize the updates that we were proposing. We haven't done any -- we haven't discussed any updates since 2015. So the bulk of the changes, I would say, are having to do with the short, mid, and long-term recommendations. Some things have been completed, some things are in progress, and some things we're proposing to delete or revise. Also, there were some changes to the future land use map that I detailed in the memo. I also have a copy, so as we discuss it, I can pull it up, and we can look at specific areas. Some of those changes were made just because of developments that have been approved over the past several years, and there were some areas that we were proposing changes on to reflect current trends and just to update. So with that, if anybody has any questions, we can move to the discussion.
Great. If you would, if you could pull the comp plan up on the screen, please. And I'm not necessarily proposing we go through this every page, but if you would take a look at your notes, commissioners, and kind of try and organize them by page number, and if you have comments early on at the front of the document, let's start with those and move forward to that. And if you would, it would help everybody out if you would also point out the page number you're referring to. Oh, yes, thanks. Prior to that public hearing, is there anybody in the public who'd like to come forward and make comment on the comprehensive plan? Seeing nobody coming forward, we will close the public hearing. Commissioners, your wishes. Ms. Smith.
I had a couple of questions for staff. The deletion of the Neighborhood Activities Center at Fort Crook Road and Child's Road. What is the basis for that deletion?
What page was that on?
It's actually in your -- in the summary that you prepared, and I can't give you the page number, I'm sorry.
Tammy, it's also on page 44. I noted that as well.
Thank you. That just had to do with the changing of trends that we've had over the last five to eight years. That area, we've had some changes in the zoning to reflect more industrial-type operations, things of that nature, so that's why we changed that.
Okay, thank you. And then this is not a revision or an amendment to the existing comprehensive plan, but there's a statement in the definition of comprehensive plan, I think it's on page 12, something like that, that the comprehensive plan is a guideline and a vision for the future development of the city of Bellevue. The Nebraska statutes provide that zoning subdivision, all land use regulations shall be in accordance with the comprehensive development plan. I'm wondering if it would be helpful to have a philosophical discussion about the purpose of the comprehensive plan and the extent to which it should guide and direct land use decisions in the city of Bellevue. And I'm referring to some extent to a rezoning at 15th and Wolf Creek, changing the zone from an industrial zone to business zone to allow for apartments, which was inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. I don't see anything in the comprehensive plan or in the zoning ordinances that addresses the issue of when it is appropriate when making a land use decision to depart from the existing comprehensive plan. And I just wanted to raise that philosophical issue.
Good, thank you. Any comments from commissioners or staff?
I guess I'll ask Mr. Shuchek and Ms. Palm to refresh my memory, but I know when I first got on Planning Commission, it seems like whenever we did something like that, there would actually be two motions. One was a motion to change the comprehensive plan, and then the second would be a motion to then do the rezoning or the change that didn't fit the plan. So again, whether state statutes changed or otherwise, I'm not sure, but it seems like, again, the plan is more recognized as it's just a plan and plans change, whereas it used to be you'd actually have to change the plan first. So I think, and again, Chris or Tammy, you can correct me, but I don't know. State statutes loosen that set a plan as, again, a guideline, but you can go outside of it, as opposed to having to change it lockstep, which is what we used to do. Again, that doesn't answer your philosophical question of when should you divert from it, but...
But it's a related question.
Yeah.
The extent to which, under the state statute, which for the lawyers in the group, I'll just cite as Section 19903, which does state that the regulations and restrictions authorized by the sections of the statutes that cover subdivision and zoning shall be in accordance with the comprehensive plan. And to your point, if when rezoning, it's as simple as at the same time or subsequently changing the comprehensive plan to fit that rezone, I'm still a little concerned about the lack of criteria for when that sort of departure from the comprehensive plan should be made in a particular situation.
I've always, and I think cities and other cities I've been in, well, always operated under the guidance that the comp plan is a guide. And you're right, there probably should be criteria written somewhere that when the council deviates from the guidelines of the comp plan, what those criteria, what they should consider. I, you know, that would be something that actually the council would have to adopt. And we could put -- we could come up with something to put in the comp plan saying, you know, should the council choose to, you know, not follow the land use plan or other portions of the comprehensive plan, they should make the following findings or, you know, use this criteria to make that decision. You know, but I don't think there's anything statutory that delineates those criteria.
They're in a, to my knowledge, they're...
I'm not aware of any. So, you know, that would be, you know, obviously up to each individual city to do something like that. And we could look at something, of course, you know, the council would have to approve that, you know, saying, yes, we're going to follow these rules if we don't follow the comprehensive plan, land use plan, or like I said, other portions of the plan. So that's something that we could look at putting into this. Mr. Ackley is correct, we used to, at times, I don't know if it was every time...
It seemed like we did catch up, like every six months or 12 months.
There would be times when a zoning went through that may have not have been in accordance with the comp plan. We did the -- had the two motions like you mentioned. I don't know why we're, you know, maybe we just haven't been doing that many recently in our -- through the past several years, and haven't been in accordance with the plan, and we just haven't been doing it. You know, if you want to get down to the other... Technically, you know, we should probably have a separate application for a change of the comp plan before a change to -- before considering the change of the zoning. And that's something we can do in the future as well. Have people submit a request to amend the comp plan, to change it from, you know, low-density residential, high-density residential, or whatever, you know, a residential to a commercial designation in the land use plan. Consider that first, and then consider the actual application for the use of the property.
So to add on to that question, if I might, just pretty much for the record more than anything else, the comp plan is revised how often in its entirety?
The last time that we discussed any updates was in 2015. So it's three years ago. I think there is the recommendation that we should do it annually.
Okay. Whether it be three years or annually, I guess my follow-on point I wanted to make is to support what you're saying, is the tracking of changes to the comp plan seems to be better served if we follow maybe the process we're kind of talking about, because in between whatever revision period that we have on file, we would then know that the comp plan is, even if we didn't completely revise the entire document, we would know that we've made a footnote change to a zoning or a page on it and be able to reference back to it a little bit easier, and then move forward in that respect. And so the document basically would be far more current. We might have less issues of recollection as to how we got to the current point of discussion on any individual issue.
I think in a situation like that, it'd primarily be updating the future land use map, and that would be very simple to update if there was an amendment.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure I wasn't trying to suggest that we have to completely revise or reissue the entire comp plan for maybe a single paragraph change or something like that, but I think to your point, it's very important to make sure that we have that documentation and that the plan is aligned.
And not just a documentation issue, but the issue of how much teeth does the comprehensive plan really have? If there are no criteria for when it's appropriate to depart from the comprehensive plan, then does, what meaning does the comprehensive plan really have?
Good point, thank you, Ms. Smith. Any other comments? Ms. Kane?
If I understood you correctly, Mr. Shuchek, then, but that would be the city council's responsibility.
It would be up to them to establish the criteria that they are following when making a decision on the...
So can we make a note in your presentation of our comments to the city council that everything that Ms. Smith said, or her idea?
Yes. That could even be part of a motion, I suspect. Okay, additional comments. You were on, I think, discussing, was page 12 or up to 44? Any other comments around that portion of the document, commissioners? Nope? Okay. Moving on to the document, any other questions? 60, 70, 80 page, 90 page? Over page 100, any comments? I had one comment on page 111, probably in addition, is that the city of Bellevue has created a library steering committee to move forward with working on procuring a site and what a new Bellevue library might look like. And I thought that that would be part of our comprehensive plan. It should be included. I'll throw that out for the commissioners to make comment, and staff as well. Any comments to that suggestion? Anything around that page number or passed?
I actually had a question about something back on page 56.
Okay. Page 56 it is?
But I do agree with your recommendation to include mention of the library commission in comprehensive plan.
Okay.
My question on page 56, it discusses migration patterns and specifically a migration rate, and I was just wondering what here that statistic was taken from?
That's from the original text of the comp plan.
Okay.
So that is probably dated, because the comp plan, the original comp plan was approved in 2009, so...
Okay. Is there any plan to update that statistic in this plan? Or, I'm not even sure what organization provided that, how we would go about it.
We can, yeah, if you want to make that recommendation, we can.
Okay. Yes, please.
Okay, great, thank you. Additional comments, page 56 are on. Hearing none? Any additional comments on the comp plan philosophically, or any other notes to be made? Ms. Baumgartner?
I'm sorry, I had another question. And this is kind of consistent with what Ms. Smith had pointed out, was the discussion of parks in the comp plan. Page 110 is what I had actually noted. But it discussed that there was a survey that was taken in the community that said most people wanted a parked space within walking distance of their neighborhood. And I did see a footnote in the comp plan that the city is now kind of moving away from that into a larger, I guess, area park. And I was wondering, is there going to be another survey administered to the community to address that?
That wasn't our plan, and I guess what that comment means is rather than putting an acre park in every separate neighborhood, what we're looking at is, and we've done this kind of, some of the developments that have happened at 48th and K Part, kind of connecting several neighborhoods, making sure they're connected by trails, sidewalks, those things, so that they can walk to a larger area. And maybe you have a four to six acre park that is easier to maintain, has more amenities, rather than doing the tiny little individual neighborhood park in every development. So they would still be connected, and people would still have access to those parks.
So I think I saw on page 110, it mentioned, I guess, within a park space within a fourth of a mile from the center of the community. So I guess would this trail access be within a fourth of a mile from the center of the community, so everybody would be able to walk to it? I'm concerned primarily with people not being able to walk or ride their bike to a parked space if that's what they had indicated that they desired.
I guess I can't speak to the exact spacing of what we've done lately, but we have put an emphasis on connectivity. So we have provided those amenities in that area and made sure that neighborhoods are connected so that they can all get to that central location. But again, I'm not, you know, whether it's a quarter mile, half mile, I wouldn't be able to speak to that without going back and looking at it. I don't know, Chris, would you have an idea on that?
Many of our new developments come in, a lot of the reasons why it's been in 80-acre parcels, and by putting it in the middle of that parcel, they are a quarter mile. Because 80 takes the half section, the middle there is the, a quarter mile. We're also, as Tammy said, we're also trying to move to bigger parks rather than the small one acre parks in, maybe specifically in the middle of the development. Put it on the south side or the north side, put it on the edge, so that when the land next to it develops, you have them put theirs on the edge as well, so you have one bigger one that'll serve a larger community. It's still a neighborhood-type park, but it is a bigger one and it will be able to provide more facilities, longer walking trail areas and whatnot. And as I said, there, it's easier to maintain one large area than moving your mowers and whatnot from park to park to park, small areas that might just be an acre or so.
Thank you. Chris, did you have a comment?
No.
Okay. One additional comment I will throw out on the page 110 area is that if you notice in the document, we have mention of Old Town redevelopment, and we also have mention of Fort Crook redevelopment as well. I would throw out that from a planning perspective, forward-looking perspective is probably a better way to put it, is Galvin Road. Is for planning and forward-looking, is there a need to set something into our comprehensive plan, do set a timetable or a vision for when or how that might work? And I'd throw that out for discussion rather than for actual inclusion. Hearing silence? Point taken?
I guess when you say Galvin Road, what do you...
Uh...
Are you looking towards a revitalization in that area, or...
I think revitalization, redevelopment, mainly in terms of probably something along the lines of consistency. I guess I would note, we're, as a community, looking at two areas right now as they move forward through the years to develop, you know, if there's any desirability for consistency across all three areas, it seems to me that maybe there's some sense to try and make them from a high level, have some consistency and make mention of that. It's not something that may have to be done this year or the next revision after that, but if we are indeed forward-looking, then that seems to be something that might need to be considered. So I wanted the commission to ponder that for a minute and express any comments they have or they don't have, and staff as well.
A portion of the, well, actually I'm thinking of Lincoln Road, Galvin Road, has been declared blind and substandard, so it would be eligible for taxing and financing with a redevelopment plan. So that tool is already in place. There has been some discussion, and I believe we have it in here, the realignment of the Lincoln Mission Corner.
Yes.
To make more of a through movement from Lincoln to Mission and the road coming, Lincoln Road coming out of the base, teeing into that curve. So there are some, some things there for that end of the, and then some actions have taken place for that end of the corridor.
Corridor, okay. Any additional thoughts? Is that sufficient at this time? Is that sufficient at this time?
I, I think a vision statement for that area, just to provide consistency, as you mentioned, would be beneficial, especially since it is the entrance to Old Town. So, and then I guess to piggyback on that, maybe I missed the section. I didn't see necessarily a vision for the South Roads Mall area. I didn't know, is there a plan or a vision for South Roads Mall? Is that?
I think that was on the Fort Crook redevelopment plan, wasn't it?
Yes, that was originally part of the Fort Crook Road redevelopment plan. I know we've had discussions over the last several years amongst the commissioners about that perhaps should be updated just because of the development and the rezonings that have occurred in that area recently. So that would be something that we could look at.
Thank you.
Smith, any comments? Nope. Commissioners, any wishes, additional areas you'd like to discuss?
I have another question. This is for staff for clarification. On page one-fourteen, and I'm looking at the very tiny font on my computer screen, so I hope I can read it right. It discusses how there's not a desire for developing design standards for residential uses. And I was just wondering if you could expand on that. I don't necessarily understand what that's referring to.
In two thousand eight, we, and there was a group of individuals that worked with the city and a volunteer panel that came up with comprehensive design standards for commercial, multifamily, and industrial development. At that time, there was not a strong desire to move that into the residential arena, single-family residential. That's kind of a theme that's carried over the years, that nobody's really wanted to touch that area. Nobody's wanted to tell individual, single-family residential property owners what their, their house has to look like. We somewhat left that up to covenants, HOAs, things of that nature. Again, we can discuss it, but that's, that's where that has come from.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks. Commissioners, additional comments? Questions?
I guess I would just suggest that based on the discussion, you maybe compile again what was discussed. So whoever makes the motion knows what parts and pieces they're going to add to here, if there's things to be adjusted as a refresher. Unless somebody was taking good notes on the whole thing. So I guess, Ms. Smith, maybe to start, I don't know if you've got a certain area that you'd make that suggestion or if that's more of an item for the council to consider as part of adopting the plan that they should also consider. Should it be binding as opposed to a guideline? Or regardless of either, when should it, can it be strayed from?
I, I think maybe there's a middle ground between binding, binding in all circumstances and just a guideline. But my suggestion would be that, that the council consider developing criteria for when, again, it is appropriate to depart from the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing silence, I will, on behalf of the commissioners, make a motion for discussion. I make a motion to approve the comprehensive plan for twenty eighteen, the City of Bellevue, as presented with the modifications included to the commissioners, as well as several of the discussion points we had here today. And those discussion points are Ms. Smith's point on criteria for deviating from plan as defined by the city council, if I got that accurately. Is that?
Yes.
Good enough? Thank you. Okay. Consideration, Public Library Steering Committee and recognition that that planning is underway on page one-eleven. And then the next one is the migration rate, the updating the migration rate into the plan. And then including a vision statement for Galvin Road. And since I made that suggestion, that could be a, a vision that we have a steering committee or a vision that we move forward to try and create a concept to move forward on that. I'm not necessarily suggesting any action, but starting to define what that looks like in a timely manner. Having made that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Kane, correct. Okay. Any discussions on the motion itself?
I'll make one comment to follow up on something Ms. Smith said earlier about, and this is more of a procedural item for planning rather than an amendment to the, the plan, is to look at the process for doing amendments prior to applications or at least in conjunction with the applications. That'll be a procedural thing, not in the plan itself.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the motion in second? Commissioners, please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Great, thank you. Thanks to the commissioners for reviewing the, the document. Our next item on the public hearing agenda is a request to approve the fiscal year twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-four capital improvement plan. Applicant is the City of Bellevue. Mr. Suchek, will you have any additions or changes to that?
I sent out a revised draft of CIP yesterday afternoon for everybody. Just for the viewing audience, this is the capital improvement plan for the City of Bellevue for the next six years, fiscal years nineteen, twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-four. The first year of the plan is what has been presented to the city council for inclusion in the budget. The out years, or years two through six, are requests from the city departments as to what they look at spending or the capital improvements they look at completing during those years. The total for the coming year is twelve thousand nine hundred and two dollars, twelve, twelve million nine hundred and two thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars, with about ten point eight million of that being funded by the city and two million being funded from outside sources. The total cost for all improvements shown in the six years is one hundred and twenty-five point seven million, with about ninety-four million of that being funded by the city and thirty-one point six being funded from outside sources. Excuse me. The plan includes several major projects. We've talked about, or we're looking at a new library, which we're estimating a cost of fifteen million dollars. A new aquatic center in the southwest area of Bellevue, priced at about ten million dollars. A new public works street facility that was initially priced at eleven million dollars. They changed, they're, they're at the unknown at this point, though. So that still is another big ticket item that the public works department is looking at. Significant road improvements, Thirty-Sixth Street, both north and south of Highway three-seventy, south from three-seventy down to Plattview Road, and then also the area between three-seventy and Cornhusker for reconstruction there. A portion of Twenty-Fifth Street also being reconstructed. Most of the funds are, as noted, will be city dollars. Major road projects are funded eighty percent by the Department of Transportation, the city contribution of twenty percent on those projects. Some of these projects may require a vote of the city voters to issue bonds for such things as maybe the library or the aquatic center. So that will be up to future councils to place those, get those placed on the, on an appropriate election ballot. Also looking at, from the discussions we've had about the aquatic center, possible significant private involvement or private investment in, in that project as well. And also, the, the library could be another area where significant private funds are donated to the city for that project. The last item I'll mention is one we had a lot of discussion about last year, and I anticipate maybe more this year, the LB eight forty area. Last year, the CIP included two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the LB eight forty fund. The council, after hearing from the public, changed that to seven hundred and fifty thousand, which was the entire amount authorized by the voters several years ago. This year, the expenditures for the CIP and in the LB eight forty area, the administration is recommending a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar for budgeted amount for possible infrastructure improvements in that area, although no specific project has yet been identified. I'm, I'm anticipating that the commission may make a motion to increase the funding or to fund the full amount of the LB eight forty plan. And obviously, if, if that's the commission's wishes, we will pass that on to the city council as, as part of the recommendation from, from the planning commission. And, and then I'll be, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Suchek. We'll open the podium to anybody from the public that would like to make a comment. Please step forward and sign in. Seeing nobody stepping forward and signing in, we will close the public hearing and turn it over to the commission for discussion. What are your wishes, commissioners? Any questions of the city on the capital improvement budget?
Question for staff, what is the total budget that's been proposed? I think Monday goes to city council for two thousand nineteen, eighteen, nineteen?
It's in the neighborhood of seventy-five million dollars.
And in terms of, again, the cover memo, I appreciate you anticipating the LB eight forty discussion. So that last sentence, I guess.
We'd like to lead that off.
I'd like to understand what that means. So the last sentence talks about the amount shown represents budgeted expenditures, not allocations to the LB eight forty fund. So for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget, did they, did they show two hundred and fifty thousand for capital improvements and another five hundred thousand otherwise funded, or are they only funding two hundred and fifty thousand?
The proposed budget does not include an additional allocation to the fund. The proposed expenditures of two hundred and fifty thousand are coming out of previous allocations to the fund, what they have on account.
Thank you, that's what I suspected. If we go back to the comprehensive plan that we just approved, if you go to page thirty-seven of your comprehensive plan, there's a section three point two called Preferred Development Concepts. And it then goes through the various types of development that the city has, and we have preferences on what our development is. If you then go to page four, fifty-four, in that section of Preferred Development Concepts, it deals with industrial. And that was one where we actually made a change this year to specifically reference Highway thirty-four. So if you go to page fifty-four of our comprehensive plan that we just recommended approval on, here's what it says for industrial. "A large industrial complex containing both light industrial land use and heavy industrial land use is suggested for the southern boundary of Bellevue along the new Highway thirty-four corridor. Bellevue currently lacks a prominent industrial site and, as a result, has had difficulty recruiting industrial tenants. This area, which is relatively isolated from Bellevue's population and future growth, coupled with easy and convenient rail and highway access, is an ideal location for industrial use." So again, as a comprehensive plan, we say that we want things in industrial, and we specifically reference Highway thirty-four corridor. In terms of the memo here, I think we're just being cute in a way. If we're going to somehow bifurcate that, since they don't necessarily spend the money on capital improvements, don't slot it in there. I think we have to show seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year in our CIP, or it's going to be forgotten. And just as a brief history here again, in two thousand twelve, the city wanted an LB eight forty program. They wanted the ability to have this tool. And the reason they wanted it, if you look at the current program that was ultimately adopted by the voters in two thousand fourteen, let me just, and I'm going to apologize, I give this annual speech, and I wish the administration would not have me do this, and instead they planned for it. But if you go to page two of the current economic development program, which was adopted by the voters, here's what it says, the overview. "Nebraska voters enacted a constitutional amendment in November nineteen ninety granting cities and villages the power to use local sources of revenue for economic or industrial projects and programs. In nineteen ninety-one, the unicameral implemented this amendment with the passage of legislative bill eight forty, which is known as the Local Option Municipal Economic Development Act. The Local Option Municipal Economic Development Act is based on the premise that communities should use their tax dollars in ways that best meet local needs. While ongoing planning processes in many cities and villages have identified development, job creation and increased economic opportunity is their highest priority for the future, a variety of constitutional and legislative prohibitions kept them from investing local public funds in development programs. The removal of these limitations gives municipalities greater latitude in determining and acting upon local needs." What does all of that mean? You can't use normal general taxes in your general fund for economic development. We can't take taxes from sales tax, from real estate tax, and say, developer, we're going to buy you a hundred acres of land along Highway thirty-four and ask you to accommodate build because you can't give general revenue for private development. However, what LB eight forty did in nineteen ninety-one, the legislator recognized, we have constitutional restrictions. Therefore, let's set up a program where you can do that. And that's what LB eight forty is. It allows you to designate certain tax dollars that you can use for economic development if the voters approve of it. And in two thousand fourteen, the voters approved LB eight forty for the specific five thousand acre area south of Offutt Air Force Base and along the new Highway thirty-four corridor. Why is this important? If you go to page four of that economic development program, the eligible activities, what is it we can incentivize people for? Eligible economic activities of the economic development program are those activities within the Highway thirty-four corridor district from time to time permitted by Nebraska statute or authorized by the mayor and the city council, including but not limited to the following: direct loans or programs to qualifying businesses, purchases of real estate to incentivize businesses to come, construction of buildings to be leased or sold to said businesses, or the development of public facilities, the purchase, obtaining, or renewing or extending options to purchase real estate, including commercial, industrial, and public sites, grants or loans for job training, and the issuance of bonds as provided for in the act. Again, you can't do these things with regular tax dollars. You can only do them if you're funding it through an LB eight forty program. So the reason this program was so important is because it allows you to use tax dollars that you can't otherwise use in these manner. And again, the program itself, page seven, it specifically adopts source of local option funds. The City of Bellevue's source of public funds for this economic program will be the existing local option city sales and use tax, lodging tax, occupancy tax, and real estate tax. So they say that we can use part of that money, as authorized by the voters, which was up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, to promote economic development. So from a program perspective, here's what our city states in this program. Page three, "City of Bellevue recognizes that the attraction of new business and industry to a community or the expansion of existing business or industry takes place in a very competitive marketplace. In order to keep Bellevue as competitive as possible in that marketplace, the community will strive to use financial and human resources available in a partnership with federal, state, municipal, and private sources." Again, if we're not putting money into this fund, we are not striving. Because it's like a piggy bank. Every year, we can use up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars and put it in the bank and use it in the future for development. Well, if you don't put the money in the bank every year, when you finally need it, there's nothing there. It's no different than your 401K. Every year, you can put a certain amount in. If you didn't put money in in two thousand seventeen, you can't go back and make it up in a later year. It's just not going to be there. So we are shooting ourselves in the foot if we do not fund the full amount every year. And again, I am not in agreement with how we're now trying to be cute and say that basically, well, since we don't know if it's really going to be for infrastructure which qualifies as a capital improvement, we shouldn't put it in the plan. It's going to be forgotten. If you also go into the program, page three, here are the specific things that the goal was that the city approved and the voters approved. "The economic development program to occur within the Highway thirty-four corridor district shall have the following purposes and goals: create new jobs within the Highway thirty-four corridor, generate employment opportunities within the Highway thirty-four corridor, attract a variety of new business within the Highway thirty-four corridor, attract new capital investment within the Highway thirty-four corridor, broaden the tax base within the Highway thirty-four corridor, and expand the labor market within the Highway thirty-four corridor." Out of all of those, for the city, I would respectfully suggest the most important thing we can do is broaden the tax base. We are running up against, again, a budgetary issue. I think FIRE has been getting all the headlines in terms of what they wanted in the budget and what the budget showed. But the fact of the matter is, if we don't broaden our tax base by bringing in new business and new employees and new people that are going to pay taxes, we are going to continue to run continually short. And to put seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year into this LV eight forty fund, that's less than one percent of our annual budget. So ultimately, the question for the decision-makers is how much is it worth to try to prime the pump and to bring economic development to the city? And for the fourth year in a row, the city administration does not put in a budget as a priority. I appreciate there are a ton of competing priorities in the budget. But I can't imagine that we can ignore economic development and ignore priming the pump to bring these things to us so we can expand the tax base in the future. And that's why, with apologies, once a year, I make this speech, if it's not in the CIP, that I think we need to fully fund it at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, because it is so important to our city to broaden the tax base in the future. And I will probably make a very similar speech of that nature next Monday at the city council, if they're having the public hearing on the budget. But from a CIP standpoint, I would respectfully suggest that all of us here should again give a message to the council that it's important to fund that, the full seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the voters authorized. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I guess I have one question.
Sure.
Is, where do the two hundred and fifty thousand come from? Is there a minimum that we can put in? Or is, I'm just trying to figure out why it's always that, and then we request it to be.
There is not a minimum. Put in, that's just what past administrations have, have decided to put in.
Okay. That was my only question.
On LV eight forty, I do have a question on the breadth of the forty, in the breadth of inclusion of type of businesses that that would cover. That includes data centers. When we talk about industrial, are we being very broad in that definition? In not necessarily heavy manufacturing, light manufacturing, industrial is basically just generic work for just about any type of business that we might happen to stumble across that has an interest in Bellevue? If it was a high-density data center, for instance, that would fall under LV eight forty? It's not just limited to industrial, I guess, is my.
I, I believe it's, it's focused on the area.
Okay.
As opposed to
The type of
specific types of businesses.
Okay. Correct. Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Any other comments? There are no other comments? Wishes of the commissioners?
If there's no other discussion, I'd make a motion to recommend approval of the CIP as presented, with the exception of putting funding at a full seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars each and every year for the line item that they describe as non-department for LV eight forty infrastructure. So that would include increasing the amount in two thousand eighteen, nineteen from two hundred and fifty thousand to the full seven fifty, and for all the other years, increasing it from zero to seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Kane, second? Any questions on the proposal? And the qualification that was offered? Hearing done. Commissioners? What are your wishes? Vote, please.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. This recommendation by the planning commission will go to the city council on?
The CIP will, the CIP itself will be acted on and have, in conjunction with the third reading of the budget on September tenth. The budget matters as far as, it would it would be an appropriate topic also for Monday night's meeting with the city council when they're discussing the budget as a whole.
Great. Thank you. Good. Okay, our next item on the agenda is current business.